Everyone can please stand. I'm gonna have Commissioner Hoffman lead us in the plannage and Commissioner Langston's gonna say what it was.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lord, we thank you for this day that you've given us. We pray that you continue to bless us, continue to watch over us, continue to keep you, Lord. Lord, we pray that you leave our house and our mind and lead us in the way that we should go, Lord. Lord, we pray, Lord God, that you continue to bless this city, bless this nation, bless this state. Lord, we just thank you, Lord, for continuing to tear down racial barriers, Lord. And, Lord, we pray that you just continue to give us favor and do the things that you need to do in order to make us improve ourselves, Lord. All these things, we ask you in your Son Jesus' name, pray.
Amen. I'd like to call this meeting in the Port St. Joe Board of City Commissioners to order. First thing on the agenda we have is a consent agenda with minutes for a regular meeting, May 18, workshop from May 18, and workshop from 8:25. If you have a chance to do those, make a motion to accept.
Motion approved.
Make a motion to approve by Commissioner Hoffman, but second.
So, Commissioner Anderson, I need to read in a Form B, I have mentioned in our last meeting, a certain minutes.
In the minutes, in the second for discussion.
Second for discussion.
All right, we have a second question.
Yes, a form, A D, a memorandum of bonus topic for colleagues, well, other local public officers, was signed by Commissioner Lowry for a vote that was taken at our last meeting of eight, eighteen, twenty twenty. He had a business relationship with a gentleman who was getting a plan approved. These need to be read into the minutes and get part there.
Any other comments? The public, resume? All those in favor? Any opposition? Motion passes four zero. All right, before we start with the city attorney, are there folks in the audience today that are here to talk about the store issues from how view? I like to not make everybody wait till the end, get it done, and then, okay, seeing none, we'll move on. City attorney.
I am nothing here at the moment, I'm sure I'll probably comment.
Whole business.
Yes, sir. First time we have is coronavirus COVID-19 update. We're still trying to emphasize to people to please wear a mask, trying to still reduce the number of places that we have here in Port St. Joe that are affected by this disease and just hope that everybody stays safe. Census twenty twenty, yes, please, feel like your census information, they are going door to door. It only takes ten to fifteen minutes, but this does help the city tremendously and in the county board and getting. Yes, sir. The first item is in reference to insurance stipend. We had a brief discussion in our budget workshop to consider some type of stipend. This would be for incentive bias for employees to come off the city insurance if they so wish, with proof of insurance from a third party. So, stay for you today for discussion.
Okay, so any discussion move forward?
I'd like to move forward with it. We talked about different numbers. I'm kind of flexible on the amount, but just so the people understand, for every person that would leave our insurance, which we pay, we would pay hundred dollars, they would go on a different plan as long as it's mutually agreed upon with the city that it meets requirements of insurance and then there'd be a savings to the city. But I would like to offer that employee a stipend to help them either with a different type of policy or, because it's a benefit employment is the way I look at it. I'm somewhere around three hundred, three hundred fifty dollars, what I have in my mind.
Yeah, I definitely agree. Mike, what is our premium this year?
Seven hundred ninety-two dollars per, and I think the previous was two hundred and fifty dollars a stipend, two hundred and fifty. I don't know what our insurance costs were at that time, but I certainly think three hundred, three fifty.
Well, I'm definitely in favor of the stockman, it does save us money if they can, if that's where we can provide proof of insurance elsewhere. The only issue that you have with that is you can possibly get a number of healthy employees off that, off that policy, off our policy, and that don't typically use insurance, that will affect our experience more. So, that's, it's a, it's a little catch there, but.
It puts the price on everybody else.
Yeah.
But at the same time, when I first dealt with this idea and talked about it last year and met with Dwight, our insurance person, I was kind of focusing on the ones that were eligible for the Medicare. That is what started the discussion. There's employees, I believe, both for the city and other private business that don't understand the benefit of getting on Medicare in the year you turn sixty-five, and that's what this discussion first started with. And I'm hoping we can educate our employees. So, the mindset was if they did leave and go on Medicare, well, I feel like we should benefit them in some way or the savings to the city. And then, and I get your point, if you lose the younger crew, it hurts you. I don't know that that would happen, we just have to see if that tend to be part of the deal. But I think it's worth at least giving it a shot, see how it runs for this coming year.
You also have individuals that could get on their spouse's insurance as well, so that can save us money in the long run, too. I'd be for three hundred dollars a month stipend for an employee that everybody's fine about.
Yeah, I feel should give the employee a choice, if they feel like the stipend is good, it's a good deal, it's a good choice to make. I think that, you know, I don't know how many employees that we have that sixty-five are medicated in America, but it's good to think about it, too. But we do the same thing at my own invention, we offer them two hundred and fifty dollars to stipend, because I need their own insurance, so it's a great idea, I support three hundred dollars stipend for the employee to get treatment.
Any other comments to the board? Anything to the public? Amy had your hand up earlier, did you have something on this topic?
I don't even know, not only should get something about now.
Well, we'll get to the public comments then, all right? All right, so what is staff's recommendation on this? Amount wise, what is fair? I mean, I'm assuming that they can't just go out on their own and get their own policy, and there has to be a qualified group plan somewhere else for them to go on to in order to meet the requirement?
Yes, sir. I believe what you're looking at is three hundred dollars a month if they prove to us that they have proof of insurance from a, from a third party. So, maybe something to do with a fire every year as far as looking enrollment, show proof that they have insurance. What I would recommend is that you approve this as a policy and embed it in your actual personnel policy manual, that way it can be incorporated there as a.
I guess my question was, can they go out on their own and just call Blue Cross on their own and get a plan?
I believe so, but based off of this, they just need to prove that they have insurance from a third party.
From my experience, I am not only sure of going, just go on that and find some insurance that can afford and that benefits your family and be present to insurance, come back to the, to the city, they'll know what your insurance is, policy says.
Sure, I mean, if that's the case, we can save a lot of money. I know before I got on the commission, my insurance was three hundred bucks a month, and it was a great plan. So, yeah, okay. Did you need a motion, Jim?
Yes, sir.
Add it to the policy manual?
Yes, sir.
I'll put it in the form of a motion that we create a policy and approve it. Any employee that proves to the city they have their own health insurance plan that meets the requirements and it's mutually agreed upon both parties that they would be eligible for a three hundred dollar stipend.
The motion from Commissioner Hoffman, you have a second. Oh, second, I'm bumped up, second by Commissioner Lowry. Any discussion?
Just one question, is this, the folks coming off to it, is this something we need to do during open enrollment once a year, or we don't allow it? Or is it a favor, Mike, as far as people coming throughout the course of the year coming in and coming in and talking about that whole?
We'd have to contact Blue Cross Blue Shield to see if, in plan, if during the course of this, we need to make a change for that.
That's the only question I have, that may be a Dwight question, is actually come to the office of staff from the end of the day.
Should we just start it at open enrollment? Yeah. Effective starting during open enrollment this next time around?
That's what I would do, and do, and I know the way we do it there at the county is if they've got a policy through their spouse or another policy, they're eligible day one, if they come on board, day one, hired, so, and I can send you.
That's the only question I got, other than that.
And feel free to have a conversation with Dwight on it, too, because it, there might have to be some, there may be some legal.
Mr. Anderson, in the past, we required monthly proof that they were paying their insurance premium to substantiate the amount of money being given, are we gonna ask for that again?
I think that once a month is a little over.
Yeah, yeah, that's a lot. I wouldn't say annually.
Are you good with that motion then?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, all in favor? And you opposed? Motion passes four zero.
The next item is classified as ARPC contract with this is, this is your CEDG grant that's underway probably with Department of Ecom Opportunity. They have asked Mr. Bowser to come back with a contract showing proof that he works for Appalachian Regional Planting. This is for just specifically this grant, this indication is on the top on there, and it's got specific project number on it, but yes, this is the one thing they have asked for is to get proof along from Mr. Bowser, and it's signed off by Chris, which is from A Office.
What do we need from the board, Jim? We need a proof from the board on the contract. We had a chance to look over the contract. Questions, comments, concerns from the board?
I'm good with staff, Gubram.
Comments from the public? All right. You made the motion. I didn't have a motion yet.
So, I have a motion from Commissioner Lowry, who has a second.
Second from Commissioner Langston. Any opposition? Motion passes four zero. All right, okay.
Yes, sir. This is actually in reference to lighting the boat ramp, the board has directed us to move forward with pay machine signings, some improvements at the boat ramp. This is the first step here, this would actually allow Duke Energy to come set a pole for the lighting place, we would have a monthly bill, but there is a cost for that actual installation. Also, we need to do two boards, too. So, you have the price here for Duke Energy, but that price takes probably twelve, fifteen hundred dollars, we think.
About twelve.
We would need to get a company to come in there and do a dedicated line for this light and come back with another line for the board for your particular pay machine there. So, staff recommendation to move forward Duke Energy so we can help with the safety program.
The board.
Motion to approve.
Commissioner Hoffman, but second. Oh, second from Commissioner Lowry. Any discussion? Board, zoom, public? All right, seeing none. Any opposition? Motion passes four zero. Light it up.
Just have one more addition, got a conversation today from Capital City Bank, their current lease agreement runs through this month. All indications are their building is moving along nicely, they should be in by the end of the year. I need to respond back at them, if we have any problems this year to do the end of the year on there, just want to give the board a heads up on that. So, I think they're moving along great, they'll have a new facility built in close to about three months, so if it was the board would do month to month through the, do they get their certificate of office?
Question on that, Jim, is there any, anything in the lease that talks about cleaning up or restoring the grass? I mean, it's, I'm guessing there's not gonna be anything living underneath that when they move it, with that trailer.
I think go back to looking at that. I think indications are that they've been cleaning site up to what extent, I don't think we might have talked about it, but we definitely need to have that conversation.
Okay. All right, moving on, all the works. Any questions for all the works?
I missed that one. No, I followed, I was doing the thing that, behind the heat. I was seeing the, yesterday, the engineer plans for that, so it's introduction.
On to surface water. Larry, is he on mine?
Yes, sir, I'm here. Just have one thing for the board today. The city has passed the third quarter of disaffected byproduct testing of our water system, and for the year, we have had, we have had no exceedance of any of the EPA standards.
Very good.
And that, that's all I have, Mr. Squiggson.
Any questions, Larry? Moving on to wastewater. We have Kevin.
Would you guys like to have a report on kind of what happened last week and where we are now?
I have a feeling that we have some public here with some questions.
So, we all, you know, last week we had the other river in the pond, by Wednesday it's gone, and that's attributed to the treatment of the pond. That's, that should, in years past, it would have been around a month, a month, within pressure days. So, treatment part is working towards. We've, the EP, that is a registered complaint, so he asked for response, and we're happy with our response. We reacted, pretty much we did all we could. We're still under consent order, so in part, that consent order is the treatment department, which we are doing. And things like that happen, you know, we'll pick up, we'll pay, we'll do whatever we can, but, yeah, that's kind of where we are. The pond this week, you know, closed a little bit, caused the rains, ponds growing, we've still got over three feet of room, so we've got a new room. We had a little bit of algae on one of the banks yesterday, so we're, you know, we're mixing up another batch. Treat one time a week is kind of a normal, you know, we think we've got something going on, we treat twice.
We treated parts last week, we treat twice this week. I do appreciate your response, I think it was thirty minutes after I called, you'd already been out there and said hello, so I do appreciate jumping on that quick. Does anyone have any questions for Kevin?
Do you all go and try to find a way to eliminate them?
We're, we're developing a plan to go and look, and it's gonna be, there's sources all over that it can come from, and we all know that. So, we're just trying to develop a plan, we have not talked to anybody, we have to sit on the doorstep, you know, any time. We're still in the development phase, I'm figuring out where, you know, how many sources can it come from? So, there's a, there's a lot of fighting ground, a lot of places where people can do things they shouldn't. Up from Overstreet out to Cape, you know, we got a lot of space, and, and it could be something a lot smaller than that. Grease and all, and it's word, you know, disperses. So, it's a little bit of a fall, because it's a long way, it looks like it's falling. So, we just really haven't developed anything that, you know, this is our problem, this is where it started. And, you know, there's some education, I'm hoping out of all this, our population realizes that's, you know, something that causes troubles and make them get some, divert out of that. People will, you know, try to figure out how to dispose of their personal stuff, you know, with landowners, other places.
Any questions from the audience?
I've got. Um, I know that when we talked about the, the smell that was off the charts the other day, and it felt like that that, we know that that, or we felt led to believe that that was probably from rants and grease. Well, I'll move that one to the side.
Okay.
And let's focus on other times when it seems to be the hottest time of the year, I guess the humidity's up, maybe we've got a lot of rain, I know there's certain factors that kick it off, and it sounds like it's algae is, is growing. If we focus on those incidences, like we have pretty much every summer, you know, we get calls, and, and I visit friends in Island View, and, and I've smelled it, too. So, we all agree we have a problem with smell at a certain time of the year. It may last, you know, several days during a three-month period. What can we do to help that problem? And what have we done in the past? I've talked to some people that have been here much longer than myself, and they talk about a time that the city had aerators running, and the bill was astronomical, and it was covered by the paper mill and all that. So, I want to focus on what can we do present day to try and help with that problem. There, I feel like there should be some kind of new technology out there at this point. Do you know of any solution?
Well, you're, you're right. You know, years ago, they had the big areas, and they beat, they beat the water up in the air, and so all those volatile's came off then, so they came off twenty-four seven. So, you lose all those stuff that smell around the clock, because that stuff's been going up in the air. Well, now what we do is during the night, you know, hardly ever smell the pond, because there's no, there's no volatile's coming, heat source, water circulation to move, which keeps the pond alive, and that's what the solar uses. But in order to get everything out of the pond, all the smell, then the only, the best choice that we found has been the bacteria that we're at, bugs. They'll chew up all the stuffs on the bottom, plus the nutrition that makes most of our issues. There's gonna be times when even your closed system environments have a smell because they have other sensors. Our pond is, is going to be a little different. But I think if we add aeration, as far as the life of the pond, it really doesn't change ninety-plus percent of the health. It doesn't change anything, our dissolved options are there, ponds are healthy, as far as, you know, the pond, what it is. But the only thing that would change is those instances where they're in the middle of the day, and something, something weird happens, we're smacking up something, and it could be an empty waste hauler truck that's a subject that's set for a while. Those things will hit, you know, in the system, and the only way to get rid of that is to, is to aerate constantly. So, if we added a lot of aeration, it's when you spread that smell over the course of time. We get condensed spots at time where you smell, and right now you can't smell, you know, but not saying tomorrow, you know, you may or may not. So, the summer is the hardest on, on, on the pond as far as. I don't know right now, I don't know of any other way to mitigate that without adding an intense aeration process. That's a lot of money, and we looked at repowering the grid, which is one point one billion, I guess, is our estimate on, what's it take just to repower the grid around the pond? It's over a million dollars just to put power back up there, and you, then you pay for each of your areas, this is a big quota, so you pay for it upfront, and then you've got the power. So, you know, that's the other option. I'm not sure it's our best option, you know, but it's another option.
Well, I, I think we need to focus on options, instead of just saying, well, you know, we can't afford it. I think we need to look at funding, find out if there's grants available, if the EP has programs that might help us. And I heard numbers of thirty-five thousand dollars a month for a power bill to run the aerators, and I realize we can't afford that, right? We can't afford four hundred thousand dollars a year, which the city's paid years back.
Right.
But what we might could do is if we could find a funding source and put some high-efficiency aerators out there, maybe run by solar panels by now, and only utilize it when we have those times that we're getting calls because the smell is atrocious, and then we run to the pumps and the aerators at that time to try and assist, you know, a week long or whatever it takes. I think we're at the point now that we need to at least explore our options, and that's what I would ask you to do, is look at, see if there is any kind of grants or any funds out there that might help, or if we can bring in a specialist that's dealt with this kind of thing before, at least move in that direction.
Now, I can, the grant thing is kind of off my, I don't know anything about finding grants, it's not, it's not my background, but as far as calling in, like, water, those guys.
Right.
They've been helpful, and we can make that call.
Yeah, and maybe DEP would be a starting point, they may say, well, we're familiar with a city in another area that had this problem, and they could give us some information on what they did to help alleviate the issue.
I'd contact our, our circuit router, that's where I would start, because there, the circuit router for part of the water runs all around the area, so you seize all the plants. So, I think, to me, that's probably where I'd like to start, if we're looking at something like that.
I can imagine if the wind blew the other direction and it blew right down into Port St. Joe, I believe we'd be a little more eager to solve this problem.
There's, there's no doubt, I never want to smell the pond, you know, I'm in my office right there, so I don't want to smell it worse than anybody else.
Yeah, exactly.
But the process is working that we've got, it's slow, I'm not saying it's the best process out of all our options, but it is slowly working. So, I'll get up and follow the water and see what, you know, what they think, and I think giving the, come out and give us a visit.
Yeah. I think the Ferguson group is still asking for grants, so we want to do, we can put them on it, okay?
You really can't get too much, the, there's a minimum, but, you know, if you add extra aeration, it's not bad. It's never a bad thing, it's just you gotta, you know, maintain your minimum to keep everything alive.
What does it cost when, I heard you say a minute ago, if you see that there's a kickoff of the algae or whatever, you'll treat it again with the microorganisms? Is that a cost that is not within your budget to treat it more often, or do, or is that covered?
The contract we've got is to provide treatment. Now, we're making the treatment, but they have to provide everything else, so we just call them and tell them we're promoting culture, and so they bring us more culture.
And, and the agreement we have with them, they bring us what we demand?
Right.
We're gonna start demanding more culture then, but it sounds like that, that helps, takes a few days to, to kick off, but it helps.
The stuff that was already in the pond is what chewed up, it's not the stuff we dumped on Tuesday.
Right.
That didn't chew up what was on the pond, so.
Right.
The stuff that was already in there chewed up the stuff.
You had to replace it, I guess.
So, yeah.
Yeah. It's, it's way over my head, so.
Can we increase the amount of times that we dump the organisms? Though, you know, is it that saturation now?
At the second year, we're supposed to be at the point where you maintain the life of how much you need for the whole pond.
So, increasing that more frequently would not reduce the amount of algae.
Now, what we have seen, because when you add culture, that culture is fresh and new, and it's, it's like a bacterial disturbance. If you dump in a, a specific area of the pond, that culture feeds so fast that it's quick to mitigate anything you see, like you see some, you know, algae pop up on the corner, we'll go treat that corner then.
It's like shock in a pool.
It's kind of like shock.
I just figured that out, yeah, okay.
But now, we're trying to keep as much of the natural, one of the bragging points that about our pond is its natural environment. You know, we're not adding chemistry, it's all biology, it's a natural biological process. So, we're about as green as I know, so.
Well, I, I appreciate what you do, I know it's tough, and I, I know you have to answer to all the complaints, both from here and the public, and it's, it's very complicated, I get lost just talking with you about it, but I commend you on the job you've done, and just ask that you look in and see if we need to do a better job.
I'll start off with water, those guys are pretty good, they're growing.
That's all I have.
Anything else, do you have any comments?
I think only, I, I just don't want to get backward as far as us going back to those half, having four hundred thousand dollar a year.
Yeah.
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 I would, but that's a big follow-up comment.
I, I feel like you need to move along, look for some money, I know it's got to be some opportunity that, as far as pond this one. I know it's got to be some opportunity that as far as on this one. And I understand how those guys and how they feel because I've seen other papers for 30 years. So I think it's important that we look out for our entire city and whether I assume our water distribution. Really focus on it, and I appreciate what you're doing. You've done a great job. The knowledge that you have as far as the wastewater is unbelievable, and it's hard to find somebody that knows. I'm telling you, this is tough. I will know, and I understand how tough it is.
It's too small for me. I'd shake my head like I understand the job.
Appreciate it.
Anything else?
Any other questions for wastewater? Okay. Thanks.
Thank you. Mike, you're up.
Thank you, sir. Quick update on FEMA and insurance. As you know, on the First Street and 20th Street list stations, we're still working those two through FEMA. Unfortunately, we only had about $80,000 in insurance coverage. We did receive that money from insurance. But John and I were able to go out and get some quotes for repair in place costs that it would actually cost us if we were going to repair those two list stations in place and not rebuild new ones. We took that to our insurance companies, and they stepped up, and they provided an additional $150,000. We did receive that check last week for coverage on the First Street and the 20th Street list station for repair in place cost. And the other issue with FEMA was the Maddox House and Bathroom. They calculated about $295,000, and then they hit it hard with a policy that stated that we should have had national flood insurance on that property. So we took that to the insurance company, showed them the FEMA calculation and the FEMA insurance company, and they've assured us and reaffirmed that last week that they are going to step up and cover that shortfall on Maddox House. And that will do two things for us. It'll give us the money from the insurance company faster than FEMA would, and then it would take FEMA out of the project. We wouldn't have to go to FEMA and explain what we're going to do. We'd be able to just take the insurance money and repair the Maddox and the Bathroom as we want to with insurance money without all the restrictions of reporting and so forth. So two positives there as far as the insurance. So that's it on insurance and FEMA. We still have several other projects that are running for FEMA, but they're all volatile in their quarter. The budget is pretty much set. I think we've talked through all, most of the issues on the budget. Mike could readdress some issues with insurance cost reductions if new employees would take this stipend that we're about to offer. But that was the only thing. I don't think we want to make any changes. And the final issue is the UF student projects. They came back last week and did a Zoom meeting and recapped seven projects that they did last year. And they've chosen three projects that they want to come back and do another year of planning for. And those three projects were a civic center municipal complex so to help us look at the plans to develop City Hall, Police Department, Civic Center, and help us find funding sources for that project. The second project they want to continue on is the recreation and stormwater rehab. They want to come back and look at moving forward with additional plans to move towards implementation on trying to make improvements with the stormwater through the 10th Street corridor and other improvements to our recreation and so forth. And then the third project that they want to move forward with is low-income housing. And I have recaps of those presentations, and we'll push all of those out to you for your review so that we can discuss further and see how involved we want to get. Certainly, if they can help us find funding for some of these things, it would make sense in my mind. But you all need to be aware of what they're thinking and what they're doing. And I'll push those presentations out to you.
Is there any calls to the city?
No, they were able to get funding through Nemours Foundation. And certainly, I think that would be the end result of a lot of the funding options would be, again, back to them. Once they go through the planning, you certainly could anticipate getting some funding from Nemours for implementation of some of these ideas if we elect to move forward. But I think certainly the board needs to be more involved and more aware of what they're planning as we move forward because they are thinking of moving towards implementation in the second year. On some of these items. Right, on the three projects that we've mentioned.
What, the projects that they did last year, what was the outcome? What benefit did we see? Did we move forward on any of them?
I don't know what benefit we saw other than from an academic standpoint. They were able to provide their students with excellent learning skills on several things surrounding the storm and immediate recovery after the storm was one.
They did offer three pretty nice renderings from three different groups about how they kind of envisioned 10th Street Park and how it would connect to, well, connectivity. So they asked some pretty nice rendering for us to look at.
Yeah.
So again, I can shoot you that presentation of all seven from last year. I don't know if there's anything substantive that came out of those in academic pursuits, in education pursuits. So I think it's interesting. I mean, we have to revisit that 10th Street and the 60 Acre Sports Complex. I mean, eventually, we can revisit that task and try to get community input and restart that whole focus from there. The only other thing I didn't have was, on the agenda, was the signage for the boat ramp. I don't know if everyone saw this. I think we pushed this out via email, but here's the draft of the signage proposed that Dusty worked with a local vendor to try to develop. Well, these are plastic signs that would seat over four-by-four posts. You see a "Thank you," welcoming people for the ramp, a parking, and then another welcome sign showing the fees. And then payment instructions that would be stationed at the payment station. And then the exiting, pull forward to make room for boats and exiting, and then instruction on launching. So I'll give that to you for your review and any input. We did get quotes for about $2,600 for installation on Dennis George.
Do you have a layout of where these are going?
No. I know that the company to discuss it on site. I wasn't able to attend that meeting, so I'm not sure. But I believe that it was basically where the signs are now. As you come in, two signs by the bathroom, two signs a little further along, and then one sign at the cheese, what I thought. But let me get a diagram to you that will help you to better understand where we could place these signs to make them most effective.
Soon this comes out of Boat Ramp Fund?
That's what we had put in the budget.
I like, just very detailed colors. So it's just placement. I'd like to see.
Well, we'll put it on the agenda for the next meeting and give you a firm. And one quick thing, we did have, we had a total on the boat ramp for this month was $8,675. Anything else?
Any other questions, Mike? Great meeting.
Thank you.
Sir, engineer.
Oh, we've got one.
Yes. Come on up and say your name and sign in, please.
All right.
Martin Davis. I'll make you have studied, yes, survey. The housing, you mean, about rolling from housing. Would that's including North Port Saint Joe?
The project initially, as I understand it, was for looking at a particular location to develop housing. I'm not sure. Is that what you're understanding? I wasn't involved in that piece of the presentation. You know, I wasn't involved in the housing side of that either. I was involved in the municipal building. I'm not sure. I know that they've talked about having several different locations around town, and identifying spots where housing could be done. They may be privately owned, they may be available. But again, this group is doing this first and foremost for the education. We may get a plan out of it that we might want to use. So they're going to throw a bunch of ideas at us, and if we want to do any of them.
I remember when they were here doing the study and everything, and they also made mention about the MLK Corridor. I know they were looking at what can be done to improve that and enhance the feasibility of that. So I wanted to do, were they on their part for this?
I don't know, but I can.
Where did the Ramis type that?
I don't know, but I certainly can, we can post these. I would think we could put these presentations online or on the website.
That would make sense to me, but I can tell you with the city what they have done as far as affordable housing in MLK Corridor if you want to. With the affordable housing, the board has approved 30 additional units for the Paces Foundation. They have a development order to move forward, so you have 30 new units going there. So that gives your total up to 80 units of affordable housing off of different scenes. As far as MLK Corridor, I have talked to the city planner, and we have a draft ready to go. So the next thing is, we're just going through it as far as making sure we understand the land and the regulations for that corridor. But yes, that framework is in place to be able to have for, the idea was to be able to have several different elements in there that would help for commercial and for residents. Yes, we're in the home stretch. I'll make sure to see that roll out in the next couple of weeks. Public hearing will have to sit the board to move forward.
Okay, so a public hearing when?
It'll be coming up shortly. We haven't said the date yet because it'll have to be done by August. So what happened is, I come back before the board, they'll ask public comments, make sure everybody's okay with it, and if it meets the needs of the committee, then the board has the right to go in and adopt that.
Okay. So it's my concern when I was here. Thank you.
I'll make a quick minute. I'll just go down the list and try to go in order. The first one on the list, or the third grant, that'd be the Park Park Stormwater and the Stormwater Master Plan. On Park Park Stormwater, you have mentioned in my notes, we had the meeting with Northwest Board on H3, and I ask to go back for additional information. The last piece of that was them asking us to look at our pricing more closely because we just have engineers as of this point, obviously, because we don't have a design chosen. So we've actually gone to a contractor that we've worked with pretty extensively, and he's making a review of those processes, I expect, by the end of this week or middle of next week to have those reviews done. At that point, we'll be able to answer the comments, and then it'll be back on Northwest Board to say, hey, guys, we're ready to set up another call. The Stormwater Master Plan, we should be finished with the master map in the inventory by September 9th, which is middle of next week. Once we're done with that, we'll begin the analysis and the report. I don't have an expected due date yet for actually finishing the analysis or report. However, we should be really close to the original due date. Which was 10:00, and I've talked with Jim. We are going to go ahead and file an extension, so we're safe there. But we're going to shoot for middle to the end of October if things add up. The biggest item that I wanted to speak about today, and we will need a decision on that, is the Port City Trail. And I left my drawing, so I'm going to run back and get it real quick.
If you do want to look at the detail behind the actual summary that Mr. Baxter gave to you, you might want to get that. It gives the detail of the elements that are involved in the grants.
So I'll bring this up after I get the information on the bid. So looking through the bids, we basically, we designed it just as the grant had been procured through DEP. And the gist of it was just to reconstruct the Shell Trail. Also, it set a bricklayer path, but as you can, as you'll see on here, the bricklayers were actually just a sidewalk connection from the existing trail over to a concrete parking area. It wasn't actually a big bricklayer trail. And then there's lighting that's paid for by Duke Energy and then Park Ventures that will buy on state contract and install. So the original budget for the project through DEP was $200,000, and I believe that's an 820 max. That'd be $160 from DEP and $40,000 from the city council. So when you take that, when you take that $200,000, subtract engineering fees out, subtract what we know we have from Duke Energy, which is around $7,800, I believe, and then what we estimated for benches, it leaves us with a budget of around $162,000 in order not to come out of pocket. So that was the reason for the alternatives in the bid. My recommendation moving forward, you can see the trail here in green. This is, I'll bring it up. So this is the trail. This is, not sure what that building is here, where it connects, walk over to the boat ramp, then all the way back. This is a little driveway down from the roundabout coming out Carverview Drive. So that was the original trail that was proposed. This is all the bricklayers worked, was just a sidewalk connection. My recommendation moving forward is that we work with DEP to eliminate that. That's $20,000 worth of bricklayers for 200 feet of bricklayers. So if we eliminate the bricklayers, crush shale is not available, but in Miami. And it is absolutely, as you can look on the bids, it's like $41 a square yard. We can go to crushed granite or washed limestone for $18 a square yard, and either one will be acceptable. Crushed granite will probably be a better choice from the low bidder. If we do that, I did propose the aluminum bridges, the ones that John has been bidding out throughout town that are really nice. However, this connection on this ditch was permitted by the county to have a pipe crossing, and it's really not optimal place to have a bridge. If you have a nice bridge, you're not going to be able to see it. So if we substitute the pipe crossing here, leave the aluminum bridge, go to granite, and remove this, it gives us a budget of $147,000. And what that does is I feel like it'll give us room if there is a change order, but what it'll also do is it probably will give us a little bit of room to say, hey, DEP, we left $15,000 we're under. You know, if we wanted to look at maybe proposing a little bit of additional trail, I think we'd probably have room to do that. So my recommendation is that we move forward with VCL for the 147, 113, 16, I think I have in the bid. And then we have room to move there. The only thing that, you know, everybody needs to be careful with removing that bricklayer walkway, but it doesn't serve a huge purpose. It's not a trail, it's a sidewalk. When you said it's a city slash county project, what does the county have in this game? What are they contributing?
So my understanding, and Jim, correct me if I'm wrong, is that the county actually secured this.
Right.
But it is in the, it's in the city of Port Saint Joe.
Okay.
So what I was confused. The county's actually lab certified, the city is not. It's a terminology going through DOT for some criteria to be applied.
So they just work with the city to apply for the.
The counties have passed through.
I got you.
For this.
So what I'm trying to do is make sure we come in under that budget so nobody's coming out of pocket. But what I have experienced in these recreational trail grants is that they're very easy to work with. And especially on this one, because we were in lieu of losing this one when we got this one moving forward. But as long as we stay under that budget, they've been good about us. You know, if we add more trails, something that's already existing, they've been good about that in the past. But so that's my recommendation. And we will need a consensus from the council today because I think the county's having a special meeting at 4:00 this afternoon to award this bid. And that'll be my last piece of information to provide DEP where they say. where they say, hey, all your stuff's in, you can move forward.
So is this two hundred and ten, seven forty one? Is that, does that include the granite or does that include everything that's on your papers it is now?
Two hundred and ten, seven forty one was the base bid. Now there is another. They got to the low bidder. I'll make a substitution.
So they were already the low bidder.
Correct.
So you need a motion to do like sub the low bid?
Sub the low bid.
With the alternatives? Any discussion?
I'm on the commission. I'd like to see the granite instead of that limestone.
Yeah, that's what I.
It's missing.
Obviously, the low bidder priced it the same, but you can see where I substituted in with the granite. It'll be a better.
Yeah.
Be a better material. No discussion, I'll entertain a motion. Let me move. All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Larry, who has a second.
Second.
Commissioner Hoffman's the second. Any opposition? All right, motion passes four zero.
Our, I'll finish up pretty quick. C B B sewer improvement, we have a pre-construction meeting with Gulf Coast Underground and bars. So at that point, we'll settle on a start date for that project. That's actually tomorrow. Here's an avenue phase two, it's still slated to start next week, be on the heat. However, I did speak to Robertson, Robertson said they could verify that with him and they said, look, the rain has got us behind, so let us confirm. So just be aware that, you know, we may have a small delay there on starting. Long Avenue Sewer, Jim, that you already covered.
I can't give us an update on there. Talked with the D E P on Friday, State of Bobby front. We are included in the funding from D E P at this point. Approximately four point six million dollars for sewer rehab on Long Avenue. Council now with, with your, with your, what, money's already approved. We're talking about a six point five million dollar project potentially that we should be getting a grant agreement in the next couple of weeks. That'll confirm that we have confirmation approved on this grant.
And what's the anticipated match on that?
Twenty percent is what we're hoping for.
Twenty percent is six million?
Yeah. Still a bunch of money, but it's one of the best plans they have had in many, many years.
But the way I understand it, Jim, that match could come down, right? Under the F R S? I mean, the, the. F R S?
The S R F.
Best, I believe you're looking at is twenty percent. In years past, we were looking at forty and fifty percent. It's about as good as we want to get.
Okay.
But now they're up to eighty percent grant, twenty percent match. So I think that's probably the best.
Downtown Sewer Improvement, I do have the videos from Church Road, got them in the end of next week. So we'll be reviewing those and making recommendations, working with John, try to come up with a scope on what we feel like that's a lining job or whatever it might be. Frank Pay, Park and Gazebo, start date is still set for next week. I'll confirm that. Other than that, two things to mention. The F R N A P cycle has been opened. The cemental is basically ten one through ten fifteen. So by the next meeting, I feel like we, we need to have a decision on what it is that we want to apply for. If the city wants us to help with the application, because we have to have the public hearings and all those things. So we just need to give ourselves a little bit of time to get that done. So I'm just kind of putting a word out that if we want a project or we have one that we, we didn't get funded, because a lot of them haven't been funded over the past few years because of hurricanes, just the recent metal. We're willing to help, we just need to get it in motion.
Has the F R N A P committee met, Jim, and given any suggestions yet?
We had a conversation with the core, so it's time for the F R N A P committee to get together. It's been a couple of years, like Mr. Backs said, it's not been funded for several years. So it's time to get the team.
Tennis football, splash pads, a lot of things. Tennis courts. Washington Gym would be a good spot.
What's, what's the max on those now?
They, you know, it's zero to fifty thousand is one hundred percent. And then I think fifty to one fifty is like a seventy five, twenty five. And then when you get, or fifty to maybe a hundred, and when you get over two hundred, it's up to four hundred five. But what I've seen is they fund a ton in the zero to fifty, a little bit in the next. And a few of the southern counties may get those others. But I think there's a way for ready community, even if you go to fifty, you get a hundred percent back. I think we'd probably have a more better success rate then than that, they're rated fifty thousand.
What's our deadline to have that picked out?
I would say, well, we've got to have everything submitted by them. So I would say that we probably need to try to do it in the next two weeks.
Can the F R N A P committee meet, Jim?
We're going to be here.
Yeah. Okay. So maybe by our next meeting, we can have some recommendations from that committee.
That way I could come back in the final meeting and we can have our public hearings and have all the paperwork done and give us time to file it. Last thing is, Mike, Jim and John met with us on the N R C S debris removal contract. And I'm looking into bid documents now on how to get that done. And I'll be working towards a proposal to the city for the consulting services and the hit rate. That's all I got.
Any questions?
The city being, being great. What's the, you know, what's the, the.
Eric, I don't have those plans in front of me and I couldn't name them all, but I can get you a set up for you.
I believe, yes, I believe it's going to be part of C, part of D. I think. I'll need your full map, I'm going to, but just, let's say to kick off, we have a meeting tomorrow.
Go forward, Burke, sir. Sign in, it's taking me.
Charles, Charles, yeah, of course, about the F R N A P. I know that there's something that's been going on quite a bit of time. Have, and have, have ever been a F R N A P grant for the Washington move?
Not since I've been on this board that I'm aware of.
There was at some point, because there's a plaque out front, I believe, that has the names of the people that were on it at the time.
Right.
Yeah, like when you pull in there for the gym parking, I stopped and read it once. I'm pretty sure that's what it was referring to.
Did that plaque refer to the name of the park, said they were, were the, you know, the park field. Now, I'm thinking, I'm thinking F R N A P. I, I was sitting out, I was with the recreation park for twenty five years and I never knew that a F R N A P had been awarded in that. So to me, you gotta look for a place to consider where the nation might be. I think it would be a prime location for it to be. And I know that the time I asked before, it's always brought up, there's a prime commitment, commitment, making decisions. Evidence, it had been overlooking Washington Recreation for a while now. So that's why I want to, I want to make, on record that, that, Eric, that we need some assistance.
And we'll make sure, Mr. Gathers, that you find out when that meeting will happen. Will you let him know? Okay. You're attending that as well. Any further comments? Yes, sir.
I was going to say, Commissioner Langston's been working, trying to get input, ideas to look at the tennis court in the backyard thing on there. So please give us some sale or give, Commissioner Langston, give us some ideas. Because we're trying to figure out, we're trying to figure out some ideas to be able to put back in. Did you make one? I think the playground out front was, was last F R N A P that I heard.
Question. Back to the last presenter. Come on up, sir. The question that I have is, I already said my name. The date and time, we've been talking about, you know, the sewage open North Port St. Joe. I know from the beginning of this year, we've been talking about, do we have a start time? Or when that works both to start on the sewage zone? I think B C.
There's a meeting tomorrow. Recon is tomorrow, so we'll decide a start date at the pre-construction meeting tomorrow.
Okay, so, so the meet, so what time? And where? Because I think most people don't even know about it.
The pre-construction meeting is just a meeting that the engineer has with the contractor. It's not generally a public meeting. So we'll have basically to discuss how the construction is going to go and everything. And then we'll report back to the city and give them more information at that time.
Okay, so, and you'll let us know about when can we expect some, some of the work start? Because I know we've been talking about it.
It's moving forward, Mr. Davis. It's been on our agenda since I started. Okay. And it's finally getting done.
So, okay, I just want, just want to make sure, that's all.
All right, Jim, any other comments? All right, let's move on to code enforcement. Jim, you want to take that or?
Yes, sir. We have been bidding for three items that have went before the special master. Let's just take it one at a time. The first one is R I P twenty twenty dash twelve. You're turning to page fourteen. This is a reference to five twenty two Sixth Street, Mr. William Thursby. City staff has been and done some cleanup in the front. There's still substantial debris and cleanup that needs to be done in front of the backyard. What you have is you received two bids, one for monolith construction and one from L A G Construction out of Manhattan. You also see that on page seventeen and eighteen, the city has a resolution that references local preference. If you were to put that into play with monolith having a business here in the city limits, they would be offered the seven percent reduction, which would give them the low bidder by a dollar and ten cents if I'm not correct on here. So basically, it's here before the board today to make a decision about Mr. Thursby's property at five twenty two Sixth Street, if we want to move forward with the cleanup. At this point in time, I don't know what's going to happen in the future with the property on there. This is strictly for the yards.
Any discussion?
What is staff's recommendation?
I believe that we have a nuisance that needs to be evaded with the problem in the yard. I believe several people account and I have to. Do I think you will go into this getting your money back? No, sir, I can't guarantee you will get your money back. We will file a lien, but my understanding, you may have a second or a third lien on the property. So this would be. Don't go in with that. But if you feel that we have a problem that the city needs to take care of, we have an option here to clean it up. I can't guarantee it's going to stay clean for six months to a year. But we will pay somebody to clean it up, so we should pull it apart in a short period of time.
So we would be spending forty four hundred dollars roughly to get it cleaned up, knowing that we're just going to get it cleaned up. Yeah, that may get their attention too.
Yeah, and it's, I've said it to them, I mean, the city, when I'm there in front of.
Right. I think it's dragging stuff in there nearly overnight.
If the house ever sold, there's a becking order of what leads most important taxes are always first. And it goes from there. We're not bothered about this.
I believe there's a mortgage and there might be a second.
So we'll file the.
The house is inside, as far as I know, two or three feet of water in it. The house is not, no way that it's worth expensive money. It's all about.
But the question is, are the complaints worth the forty four hundred dollars? Is there a public safety risk associated with the debris?
I don't know a public health expert, but looking at that backyard, I'm sure the rats.
That's, it's our responsibility to make sure that we have a safe place for people to live and also to protect people's property values. It's unfortunate that we take advantage of on occasion, but I think this is something that we just can't ignore really. And we put a budget item for cleanup like this. Yeah, I agree full well that some of it's not going to be reviewed, but.
I mean, we went into this knowing we were probably going to lose some money on some of these projects. Probably one of them, but it's definitely a nuisance.
And we've got other ones right behind it.
If we don't clean this one up, then I, I feel like we don't even discuss anymore.
Right.
Because this one is an eyesore right in the middle of town.
The other aspect on this is. Local preference resolution and coming to a fact.
Sure.
It's within the seven percent threshold.
Any comments from the public? Yes, ma'am, come on up.
Anyways, Linda, to shooting, I had something else to talk about, but since you were on this topic, I have an eyesore on the corner of Battle Street and Avenue E, which used to be Charlie Mary Ellis Timber House. Sister Green passed away. Somebody bought the house, started working on it and stopped. And I'm sure you've had complaints because my neighbors have talked to me about it and they've also called. But that's also an eyesore that needs to be taken care of on the corner of Battle Street and Avenue E.
Yes, ma'am, we're getting caught up when we actually put money in the budget next year. All right, anybody else?
I'd say let's move forward.
Is that a motion?
Yep.
All right, we have a motion. I assume the low bidder.
With low.
Rather, with local preference.
Yeah, based, based on our policy.
Okay, so there's a motion to award low bid monolith construction with local preference by Commissioner Larry. We have a second. A second from Commissioner Langston. Any opposition? Motion passes four zero.
Return of page fifteen. The next one is two forty two Avenue B, Mr. Carlos Cunningham. If you'll rob out and look at this house, this house has been vacant for many, many years. As long as I can remember, there's actually a car sitting under the carport there that probably has an inch of dust on it. This one has also went through code enforcement. And at this point, we have had no action taken on it. So staff recommendation, this one would be for forward demo on this one. This one would be to take the house down because it's unoccupied. And the low bidder on this one is L A G Construction for ten thousand seven hundred fifty thousand.
Discussion or staff recommendation to move forward with the low bidder? Recommendation from the special master?
A move of the, the special master, staff recommendation that L A G Construction. And the low bidder, we allow to move forward with.
Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Langston, he's the second. I'll say, any further discussion? All right, any opposition? Motion passes four zero.
And the last one is R I P two thousand twenty dash fourteen. I will let our attorney give us an update on this one, the staff recommendation on this one. If we're not moving forward and work with our attorney to resolve this one.
This is, this is a good news, though, we're going to recoup some costs. But Tom Gibson has advised that the people that were going to buy this property, put in a contract about the property, do accept our requirements that we put in our last meeting. Of they're going to pay, we're going to release our liens that we currently have on the property with payment of fifteen hundred dollars. And we will not release those liens until the property is cleaned up, which they promised will be within sixty days of the day they call us.
Staff's recommendation to table this or?
I would follow your attorney.
Yeah, my recommendation would be to not award any bids right here. And let's see how this plays out. Very counsel, this matter should be taken care of.
They know this company that bid on this, they want to talk to the people that they have a contract on. They may need somebody to help them with this.
So you just need a motion to let the attorney handle this one?
Yes. We're just leaving, you've already. Yes, we're just leaving, you've already done that, he's already taken care of.
He's already made the motion.
No action on it. Any discussion on this, guys? Does anybody want to take action? Moving on.
Say your note, too, we are limited to go with more code enforcement actions. We have seen lots of notices with people trying to get compromised, and the next step will be set up code enforcement here. So we'll continue through this process, we hope people will want to, but at the same time, we're trying to help neighbors that have issues and problems in their neighborhoods.
Actually, Jim, I did have one question that goes to these biddings. Just reading over our locals' preference policy. Do we contact the local bidder? It says in here that you have five business days to, for the higher bidder with local preference to match the lowest bid. Do we reach out to those contractors?
This is the first time I can ever this old, they said a reservation would come into play. The chance I did reach out to Chris from Monolith, and he said, yes, he would, he said the low bid, so that's why we've moved forward.
Well, I guess my question is, the way this reads, and tell me if I'm wrong, that if we were to call Chris on that second one, he could have agreed to be at the same price as the low bidder. It has to have been for seven years. All right, this was kind of confusing to read, got it.
That is true.
Did you write that one?
Yeah, that was in my, in my first step.
But now, the third one, if we would have decided to go on the last one, if you look at it, you'll see what would happen on that one would have been, still would have been, let's say, that would have gave him a preference of nine hundred dollars and seven cents. So that would have put him in the threshold for the last.
Got it.
But we need to move forward.
Very good. Is that the code enforcement, Jim?
Yes, sir.
Police Department. Thank you, ma'am.
Just a quick update, Monolith Construction, rebuilding, Police Department is expected to be done possibly early next week. With their word, they'll clean the building, have it ready, definitely by the end of next week. Furniture has been ordered, it's supposed to be installed on September twenty-fourth. So between possibly the eleventh of September and the twenty-fourth, we'll have to, our I T guy will have to do some I T work, phone up, you know, do their thing, but that's kind of time.
Very good. Any questions for Chief?
I believe there was supposed to be a mold inspection down on the upstairs, like yesterday, how'd that turn out?
The guy that did the mold inspection before, he came back and sprayed some more solution on the wall. I know, Mr. Jim's been working on that, and there's been a couple of leak, roof leaks, that they're going to have to have some work done to fix, too.
I want to make sure we have that solved before we put our employees back in that building.
We'll, we'll be monitoring.
Yeah, just let me know if it falls out.
Any further for Chief?
Today is probably my last meeting. I've asked, I asked Chief and Wade and Richard to come to the next two weeks from today, so unless, I mean, I'll be at the meeting or anything. Maybe my last one, if everything worked out. Appreciate you guys.
Wish you the best, so much.
Thank you.
All right, Ms. Charlotte?
Yes, sir, we're having open enrollment on Wednesday, September the ninth, and on Thursday, September the tenth. I will be contacting you about a time that is convenient for you to meet and go over your current and projected interests and concerns. Thank you.
Questions for court? Citizens to be heard. Yes, ma'am, come on up. And I saw you signed in earlier.
Lead the Matthews, three twelve Avenue F. And I have a question for Commissioner Langston. When we go to get started on our community garden? And have you heard anything back from this Port St. Joe company about the letter that we needed before we could start?
Yes, I did. I gave the, got the letter to Mr. Gonzalez. Everything that we didn't already agree with, we don't want to sign because he said we don't want to be responsible. But we do have, we are moving forward with the insurance, which we're running through, I know C, C. And we supposed to have, I suppose, a meeting with the president, Mr. Ash, and Mr. PB later this week, to move forward with insurance, we'll get that done in probably another week, week and a half after that, we'll be moving forward. But the thing with the pandemic, you know, we didn't want to help in it. We need to be careful, and so this is ourselves, and I think right now, I think it's a good time, Mr. Kev, this is ourselves enough, well, we can move forward. We've got to put our masks on, and we can move forward sometime next week, but I'll give you a call.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public? She stood up first, sorry.
Linda Teshuvi, I think this worked, I want to be heard, but. Please go.
Yeah, yeah, we got it, it's on.
My name is Linda Teshuvi. I'm a resident of four oh one Battle Street, Port St. Joe, north side of Port St. Joe. I can't see with my leg. Yeah, you got your reading glasses. Okay.
There you go.
My name is Linda Teshuvi, and I reside at four oh one Battle Street on the north side of the city. Please understand that these issues have been going on for some times now, and I feel as though they need to be addressed. I have three main concerns that I would like to address in front of this board. Sewer problems, which y'all already discussed, Langston Trail Improvement, and the Washington Recreation Center. Sewer problems, my first concern is the city has a major problem, which you've already discussed, with the sewer system. I have been having a problem with sewer lines for several years now. I can't say for sure that the water is what's causing feedbaths to have rashes and infections in their private area. But the water is discolored and not being treated enough. The water is leaving behind stains, marks, and both my face bowl, my bathtub. I started noticing the smell of sewer along with gas, I mean, a real natural gas scent in the bathroom, and the water keeps backing up. I was talking, taking a shower, and I said this at the last meeting, I was taking a shower a few weeks ago, and I felt something hit my feet. I didn't look down, I'm always singing, taking a shower. I didn't look down at first, but it hit me again. Hmm, I, hold on, hold on, okay. Notice it was the used toilet paper, used toilet paper that had backed up in the bathtub while I was taking a shower, disgusting. I have paid Peaton Plumbing over four thousand dollars to fix my plumbing problem, and I'm still having problems, and which I was told is on the city side. We are paying for water that we can't even brush our teeth with, the cost of brownish color and the sewer smell. Please advise to a plan that the city will address this concern on the north side, which y'all came before me. Okay, my thing is, we have not, because we asked not, well, I'm asking. I spoke with Eddie Fields, Mr. Eli Matthews, Mr. Nathan Peters, Mr. Clarence Monet, and they all agree with what I'm saying. Beverly Quinn said that she has contacted the city several times about the sewer on Avenue F. The smell is coming from her sink. Vanessa Finney said to me that she has to call the city from time to time to come take off a cap, or whatever that is, it'll back up if they don't come out and do something to that cap. What is the difference between water line and drainage lines, and do that come before or after the pipes? Okay, I have never had running water or any sound in my bathroom until I left this meeting on August the sixth. I came to a special meeting. Ever since then, water in my bath, toilet is running as though I flush my toilet, and it has to flush again. This been going on for one month, just one month. And I asked somebody about it, they say that's your water bill going to be high. So I don't know what it is, but there's a problem with the sewer. Y'all might know what it is. Do you plan on replacing the pipes? On Main Street, Battle Street, Peter Street, Avenue C, Avenue D, Avenue E, Avenue F, Avenue G? If so, when? Langston Trail Improvements, every time I come to a meeting, the commissioners are talking about BP money and other dollars that need to be spent. So why don't you start putting some money in the development of reverse, reversement, refurbishment of a couple of projects on the north side of the city? My request for the sidewalk to run along the Langston side trail has been completed, and I want to say thank you for that. It means a lot to me. I would like to see if the city can spend some additional dollars and improve the trail with some colorful plants and trees. Lastly, but not least, Washington Recreation Center renovations. Lastly, I would like to discuss renovation and improvement to Washington Recreation Center on Peter Street, North Port St. Joe. Let's stop patching up all the problems and replace doors and windows with new material. We don't ask so much, and we sure don't get much help over here, over there. But I would like the commissioners to address a plan to have the recreation center revamped. I want to request a large room be added for banquet and social gatherings. We don't have anything on the north side to entertain, to invite meetings and stuff, we don't have nothing like that. The bathroom need to be upgraded and improved, the kitchen needs some work, and I would love to see some money to what, improve in this main facility. Please consider hiring two full-time employees, and let's start applying the grades that you apply for, 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 for the north side. Let's use them for activities at the recreation center. In closing, I would like to say thank you for taking the time to hear my concerns, and I hope that you find in your heart to spend the wealth equally throughout the city. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Hopp.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I already stated my name, talking about sewer and different things that's going on on the north side. I noticed when we was talking earlier, you guys were talking earlier, you was talking about the first street lift station and the sixth street lift station. Okay, now you got lift station in North Port St. Joe, you got one on A, I think you got one on Clifford Sims. You got one on, up towards, isn't that, Hardwood Street? Yeah, it's three in our community, okay? These the only lift station there, what, what are we doing at these lift station in North Port St. Joe? I still, I noticed you got a generator or something on, somewhere over on the north side? So evident that we got trouble with them, right?
Yes. They're on bypass, right, John?
Just one Clifford Sims, but that's one of the ones we're going to replace.
One on Clifford Sims and one. I, 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 that's the one, I think, I seen.
And the two that they're talking about are the main stations in town. If those go down, nothing works, so we've got to take care of those first and foremost. Got to fix the source and then move out from there. Is there anything else in the plans, other than the station shops?
What we got, we call the old hospital, the station, Clifford Sims, at this point, there's two of them down. There's five stations in North Port St. Joe, two on A, one in Gateway, one at Clifford Sims, one on.
Right, in Gateway, one, the latest one that was.
I gave you a seven to the new, right.
Right, okay. So, so I, I think that that might be some of our sources with the problems in North Port St. Joe, because there is prevalent over there. Like I said, I have called several times that, at some point, they have to come out and pump things down just to get it to go through the lift station. So there is a drastic need for something to be done in North Port St. Joe for sewage. And I'm quite, I'm quite aware, everybody probably, nobody knows, because I guarantee probably a hundred five commissioners, I probably would be safer assuming that probably most of them don't drink the water. So there's another issue that we face, you know, because like I said, seen and heard that we've been increasing our water. So that was something that I wanted to make sure that we, we addressed, because like I said, we pay for some that we can. I mean, this is, this, and it's an issue that ain't just started, this is an issue that been going, only going for a while. To bucket, to me, I, I don't have issue with upping the price, but I do have issue with if we can't use it. It might not be a proper time now to try to see if I'm upping something, you have such issues with it, it's a particular time. Not saying it ain't something that we need to do later, but to me, it might not be the correct time to do it right now.
And that's my opinion. That's tough, sir, I mean, we're, we're constantly running new lines, we're trying to update everything that's old. And I think most of the water lines in town, minus some main and another, are, have been redone in the last ten years. Some of the problems that we run into, and this happened actually with my boss, arguing and complaining about it until he finally replaced the lines in his home, because it was getting to his house clean, and then he had a house built in the fifties that water was running through, and it would come out rusted. And so a lot of this may be, you know, having the homeowner's lines looked at as well, it could just be the age of the home.
Yeah, well, my home, I'm there, we're really not too, like I said, a lot of, and then that, that would be something that you might explain to the resident, okay? Some of your problem might be your pipes in your house are over sixty years old, so, but it's the ones that don't have that issue and still have the problem. You know, over there now, it ain't like you come to my house and test the problem, get up at nine two, that you're going to get it. And then granted, for, for the last three years, the, the person from the water department will come to one eighteen, turn on my speaker, check at that area. Yeah, so, so, so this is something that I ain't talking, I, I, I'm having this happen. So that's why I'm saying, my concern is not just for me, my sewage pretty new, but I'm talking as a whole. North Port St. Joe, there's several issues going on over there, we don't have to look at it, and I understand the taking on it. But sometimes even with the taking on, you have to do something a little different. You know, if, if the time, if that issue occurred then, you, you can't say, well, okay, we got this on schedule for two months or three months, when that issue demanded an inspection, nah. So that's why I say, you know, what I'm saying, this is, not fussing, but bringing it to your attention, because they have not only Mr. Teshuvi having issues, there are people that go to church in my church, and they're having issues also. So this is not, this is one, two.
This is a brawl, this is a brawl situation. Thank you, sir, I appreciate it. Anybody else? Come on up, sir.
Good evening, my name is David Lewis. This COVID nineteen, this doesn't do, been taken for granted. We need a podium at the cemetery. The preachers have to stand with their boots in their hands. If we had a concrete stand or block that would be permanent on each, on each cemetery, it would be very hard, help, they have to stand and read like this. Unless the, the funeral has a podium or a speaker, we don't have no lights out there or anything. I'm here to ask the city, would they help and bring this in as a. I'm here to ask the city whether they help and bring this in as a new project. Uh, I got a couple of blocks around the house, and I'm pretty sure somebody else got a couple of blocks around the house. But it really need to be done because we having funerals even on Wednesdays, Saturdays, and Sundays. And I would appreciate it. I think the community would appreciate it if we had a podium so we could pass out the word of God. Thank you.
Who's that calling?
Well, I think it's a great idea. If we look at the podium, I've thought about that. Commissioner Langston has been working with us on the lighting out there. So we have a agreement right now for the lights. There's a product on when it gets over to 50 million. So we're working on the pump house and that, so that is coming. But idea by the pavement is looking at.
Should be a common form of thinking.
Yeah, there may be something we can find this market.
Then we just buy, like, covered all the.
But things are in the works, so that's something we can add.
All right, last call for Citizen Spirit. See, now we're gonna start with Mr. Lawrie today. I don't want to have anything, sir.
First of all, I'd like to thank everybody for coming out with their concerns. Uh, we, we've faced with this problem for a while. We cannot leave with this, um, CDB agreement. Um, we'll see something through there. Um, sometimes, um, things don't happen where we want it to happen. That doesn't mean that we're not working on it. And, uh, you can't get push the can forward when you have certain policies that the city go by. I know it's frustrating, frustrating reality of it. You know, I deal with some of the same situations. And I do mention it to our city now, and we can try to, um, work some things out and try to move forward. So, um, some of those things, some of those concerns, it will be taken care of. It may not be demolished, but definitely gonna be, uh, looked into and, uh, and we'll move forward with that. Secondly, I'd like to talk about some of the things that we have done at, uh, at, um, Washington Recreation Center. It's last Pus Park. Um, new roofs on, on the building, um, LED lights are in the gym. First time you go in here, uh, right now, it's beautiful, you know, when you turn the lights on, you know. Um, just put an AC unit in there, uh, two, two years ago.
Or drip the next month.
Who?
It drip, water drip sweat from the next one, it wasn't working.
That's when you make phone calls and let people know.
It didn't work long, we're Santa B.
All right. Santa also, yeah, they call it, they call it good man. Uh, we working on the lights right now at the softball field. It's the dugout, the loose on the dugout, it's been fixed that, that, um, that's good. All right. Construction on a new, um, bathroom starts in October. I've, um, uh, what would they like to see? There's certain things that you would have to do for the bathroom to not afford not to infect, um, a historical ground or anything, so it has to be, um, done a certain way. But I think the bathroom, I think it was fifty-six thousand dollars in the city in, um, that behind. I was kind of giving another fifty, all right? Um, just put a new compressor yesterday in the wig, in the wig building. And I asked many people about the opinion to do what, what we need to do with the salt, with the, um, the tennis court. Nobody responded. So what I, what I'm gonna do, I'm gonna take, um, control of it, and I'm gonna probably demolish it. And probably put, and probably put us a splash pad for the kids or something like that.
Don't do it yet, don't do it yet.
Well, if, if, if nobody gives me a phone call or tell me what they would like to see, uh, I can't, I can't not move forward with it and do things that, uh, and just keep waiting because it has to be done, something has to be put up. The cracks in the, um, on the court are as, 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 as big as long as, as me, in my office.
Why?
Why?
Yes.
Because of the, um, the storm, I guess.
The base foundation is damaged and everybody, contractor that's looked at it says you need to tear it up and put a new one in.
So were you gonna put a new one back, can you do it? Because I, I taught Rob James Thomas to teach some, uh, tennis classes, but we need some money generating in that recreation center in order to hire somebody to do these things. And we need these things renovated, not patched, not repaired. You need to renovate the building here. The building is only you and I could, yeah. You know, we need some money over there, and what I asked for, just do it even. Put some here, put some there, put some here, put some there. Don't leave us out in the cold.
Oh, okay. Nothing, uh, Commissioner, let me say this.
It's not speaking up when I don't come up.
If you're gonna speak, you're gonna have to come up because we can't hear on the, on the video.
Let me say this, because first of all, nothing that I do is a personal assault on anyone, Commissioner. It's just that when I come, I see a need. And now, you just said something about tennis court, I've been aware of it all my life, I ran it for years. And nobody, I never heard anything about, you know, looking for suggestions. So maybe, that's what I'm saying. If you have somewhere that you can broadcast this or let people know that you're looking for suggestions, then you probably can get some. You know, because like I said, to me, there shouldn't be, uh, that much of a discussion about the tennis court because the tennis court is something that's been in that neighborhood for years. And what we need to do with the tennis court is remodel it, to have demolition, put them back so the people that won't play tennis in the community will have area two. But we won't have to go to Frank Payport to play tennis, which that's what they doing now because they, uh, they're serving something. So, so these are things, maybe even you might want to consider getting your committee in the community or that, that you could have to help make suggestions. Now, I'm gonna say this to you personally because this is not a type on you saying you're not doing your job. I don't, I don't see that. I think you're doing a great job, but, but there are areas that, uh, Mr. Fate told me something long years when I first started recreation. He said, Charles, sometimes this, the, the wheel that don't scream get left out. He said, well, if it's screaming wheel, it will get the attention. So sometimes we just have to, uh, uh, make known what's going on, and that's not to reflect on you in North Port St. Joe, but I think you do a good, uh, good job. But these are areas in there that, that need to be addressed. Washington Recreation, and like I said, that's something that we talk, we, we keep going up, Recreation. Do we have a Recreation Department?
October 1.
October 1, we have another Recreation Department.
Well, whatever we want to do in that position, we are gonna have somebody that's dedicated to Recreation.
So, so that's something that's, it's, it's, I'm glad you, that's the first I heard of that.
Charles, there's one thing to kind of note on there. With COVID, we had scaled back a lot of summer recreation programs on there. The, uh, workforce board has been running for the last couple of years.
Right.
They scaled back, some of the still have summer program. But right now, what they have is they have Miss Given, and they have, um, Tion, who's actually gonna open the gym back up again after school a couple of days a week, and on Saturdays and Sundays. So they're slowly opening back up, and they're concerned about COVID. But those programs are being reestablished right now.
Okay, so, so now, that's, that's what I'm saying, that's, that's through workforce?
Yes.
City?
Yes.
City does not have a Recreation Department. But when you come here, it's, it's a lot of stuff that's been talked about from the Recreation. So my concern is if we don't have one, if we don't have one, why are the, this discussion keep coming up about certain things for Recreation?
I don't understand the question. We have, we have. Is it a maintenance question or having actual events hosted?
Well, well, my, 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 my concern, you said Recreation is coming from the Recreation, right? And I was under pressure that we don't have it.
We have a Firdat Committee that gets grants for Recreation. We have, the Johnson's Department has people that work on maintaining human parks.
Okay.
But no, as far as a person that organizes, you know, community volleyball, no.
So we don't have, okay. So, and we, so, so question, I'm still asking you. So we dealing with poison in the gym. Yeah, he told me about the summer program that's ran through the workforce program. What are city doing towards Recreation in, uh, Washington?
Providing the gym, that's it.
So the gym itself, and, and I mean, but I, granted, that would be a good solution. If you could use the gym, which has come out the last couple of years, in order to use the gym, you gotta go through workforce.
You're gonna give, we have a lease with the park. Thank you, sir.
Really, really, I want to say something, um, I, 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 actually, I wasn't upset. Only thing that, that really, I, I was really, um, over and over some of the things that we have done. But also, I was talking about the, um, the tennis court, which is from the last, what, year and a half? During the meetings, I've been, um, asking people to give me a call, give me a call, give me your opinion with what you do for, um, with the tennis court, you know, I can, they're asking people to call. I mean, um, they call for, they call for everything else, you know?
Right, and I can understand that.
I don't mind, I don't mind them calling because that's, that's what I'm here for, that's my job. So don't, don't ever think that you can't call me for anything. I'm just saying that I would have loved for somebody to call with their opinion of what they would like to see behind Washington Gym at the Tennis Court, that's all that I.
And you're the first two that ever said that, you know, and rebuilt back as a tennis court.
I mean, I, 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 I guess we necessarily, because there was, during that time, they had people in the communities. And, and, and one of them, she mentioned earlier, Mr. Rob James Thomas, he's already, already altered that.
He's been here when we talked about the tennis and where we would go.
When you guys talking about, and, and when I'm here, you don't talk about that because this is the first time I heard about tennis court situation.
And we actually had a workshop on it, and, and he came and spoke on behalf of where he, he thought pickleball should be and where tennis should be. And I heard no suggestion of rebuilding up there at the gym. I mean, we'd love to do that if that's what the community wants. We'd be more than happy to do it.
Could that was, could that was similar to how both, both pickleball and tennis?
Absolutely, big enough.
Yeah, so, so, you know, as I was saying, if you want, if that's something you want to do, then put, if you got to put, you do one, one side tennis court, one side. You got two, you got two courts on that, too. And that, that's all I was asking, you know, I've been asking for a year and a half, you know, that's all I was asking. So, so. You give us some criticism, I'll, I can, I appreciate it.
You said in Florida.
I need to get it wrong time. And it says, we have not do because we asked not, I'm asking. If you power, please, I love you dearly, you're my nephew, and I love you better than my brother was here. It would be a different thing. Listen, guys, we all know that it's not right. We're not getting any money generated in the North Port St. Joe. We only have one building, just one. Our kids don't have nowhere to go, nothing to do. They love basketball. Why take that away from them? Fix the place up where it can be where we can have family comings, family gatherings, banquets, meetings. Town hall meetings can be over there. We need something done, guys. We really do. And these pipes is far too long, too long. And yes, I have spent over four thousand dollars on my sewer system. It's not my end, it's the city's end. I mentioned that in the last meeting. Mr. Grantland came to my house to ride it out and said there was no problem. But there is a problem, and we all know that there's a problem. It's a bad problem, I mean, a serious problem, where Dudu is backing up on Avenue F in front of Ms. P. Cola Smiling and Ms. Alice Williams' house. That's going on too long, y'all, that's unsanitized. Besides the contamination that we're living on, we got to live with raw sewer. It's not right. Only thing I know to do is call the Department of Environmental Protection.
Thank you, ma'am. That was overwhelming. Eric, you just, we're out of, I don't have it. All right. Uh, real quick, what you got?
Real quick, I'm, uh, with a, real quick, David. I know that the crews is not cutting grass over there. Wasn't playing, uh, don't know where.
Supposed they're really mean. Okay, next Tuesday. Next Tuesday, we're hoping to follow this well, get the crews back next week if they allow.
Correct, we'll have two crews, the county will get their crew back. Keep your fingers crossed, Tuesday.
Okay, uh, we need. Okay, I just got a couple of quick things. Um, BJ's, I thought we had a talk with him about three months or so ago about cleaning up his lot. It is stretched all the way around, all the way around about the end of the bridge now. Now it's parked a lot. We get going for it. Please take a hard look at the ordinance and do something about that. It looks horrible.
Yeah, I think I missed somebody. They cleaned it up, and it's worse than the world before they cleaned it up. I mean, and the grass on top of the car.
We can figure out if there is violation or if he has a deal or not for St. Joe company, but then St. Joe's violation. It's, it's bad. Um, next thing, over the past year, I've been getting just inquiries, people asking about, you know, hey, housing, housing, where can you build housing? I had about three in the past month that have talked about somehow combining the Field of Dreams ballpark idea with housing, like have a park in the neighborhood built in. Would you all be interested in entertaining a presentation from one of these three different businesses that are interested in building housing around the ballpark? I mean, I don't want to waste anyone's time and have them do drawings and things unless we'd be up for something like that. The rentals that we have dropped here at the St. Joe Company gave us that. Gave us that land used for, um, the ballpark. But, um, if you guys aren't close to it, I'll just tell them to come on and bring it towards the board.
So you're, you're talking to three different companies?
That are all interested in doing the same thing. They want to build housing, and, and they all said that they could leave the room that would be required for the footprint of the park that we have designed at one point. Still think there's plenty of land there to put housing. And the way that I was thinking is because it's our land, if we could work out a way to help them maybe incur some of the cost, we may yet see a Field of Dreams out there.
I would be comfortable with it, looking at it, sure. Uh, but I think it needs to be discussed in more of a workshop environment.
Yes.
Where, uh, where we listen more to the public than we do come up with what we think we want to do with. That's, that'd be my suggestion.
I know we need a lot of new housing. We need to just try to come in and create jobs for, for people, but they gotta have someone to stay there. You know, so, uh, like Commissioner Hoffman said, you know, I was, uh, to tell them about it, you know, about Will.
It wasn't a hard note, so I'll tell them to bring forward some pretty pictures.
I'd say keep it to a, you know, a minimum for a group, and then, I mean, we do need to kickstart the recreational piece of it. Yeah, I mean, it's still here, here from the public.
That is all I have, I'll entertain a motion, you turn.